All right, thank you all for coming tonight. We're opening with a public hearing on the rate increase for sewage. It's going from thirty-four dollars to thirty-six dollars per month. Do anyone have any questions or comments on that? Okay, and again, this was part of the budget, which was green button pass, so we have no issue with that. We're gonna move, uh, close the public hearing and open the regular meeting. You all should have copies of the minutes of the previous meeting of May 1st, 2017. I had a chance to review them. Our clerk got them off us quickly. And then attend a motion to accept the minutes as provided by the clerk.
I'm going to, uh, accept the minutes of May 1st, 2017, as number...
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, motion carried. Next thing you should have are bills you all found a revised addition. Are there additional deletions or additions besides this revision?
No.
Okay.
I make a motion to bill debate. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, clerk, do we have some correspondence?
We do. We have a letter from, um, VFW. It is, "Dear Village Board Members, The Great Shayside River Memorial VFW Post 1418 are planning to honor their poppy programs through the week of May 14th through 20th. We are requesting your approval to solicit for that program at the businesses in your village. We want to thank you for your time and hope we can put a poppy on you. Support your vets. Francis Baker, Commander, Post 1418." And he told me that they would be setting up at Stewart's.
Okay, and I understand, uh, our administrator told me they coordinated this with the Legion. We approved, uh, the Legion's poppy drive last board meeting. Or maybe it was the clerk that told me that. Of course. One of these two wonderful people over here told me. And, uh, so just so you guys know, they did coordinate with the, with the Legion. Okay, so, uh, we need a motion to, uh, allow the VFW to, uh, honor their poppy program during the week of May 14th through 20th in Rousas Point. We're gonna set up at Stewart's.
So, second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay, motion carried. All right, first thing on the agenda under my name is presentation by Mrs. Leterno, the Recreation Director, regarding pickleball. You wanna give us a little...
Wow, I'll give you a little information about that. I hope you guys don't get tired of your meetings. Give me all this great information.
You're always bringing money. As long as you bring money and don't ask for it.
I've been approached by several people regarding pickleball, um, having courts in Rousas Point. So, I put some feelers out there and I came up with some connections. And, uh, just for a little background information, uh, as of 2014, pickleball was one of the fastest-growing sports in the United States. It was created in 1965 by three guys near Seattle, Washington. It's a very simple game, um, easy to learn, combines tennis, badminton, ping pong with, uh, wooden pad, or wooden plastic composite paddle and a plastic wiffle-type ball. You can play doubles or singles. Uh, there are over fifteen thousand courts nationwide, and there's at least one pickleball court in every state. So, the court size is, uh, similar to the size of a badminton's doubles court, twenty feet by forty-four feet. And it's striped similar to a tennis court. So, uh, that being said, that's the background on pickleball.
You have a diagram of that?
I do. I think everyone should have a diagram in their packet that looks like this.
I got it.
Okay? So, to, um, give you a little explanation on this, this is the one hundred by fifty-foot tarmac basketball court that we have out here just north of our tennis courts, uh, which is actually bigger than a professional basketball court. So, um, I don't very often see people playing the full court. They usually hang out at one basketball. So, uh, it turns out that's a perfect surface for pickleball. And I had a couple of people come out and look at it. The person that works for the Foundation of CBPH had Vermont Tennis Company that paints the tennis courts, I believe they did our tennis courts here, gave them an estimate of painting. They're gonna paint the whole pickleball court forest, put the lines down, the three courts. They're gonna make the middle part, which is called the kitchen, red. That's the part that's red on your diagram, that's called the kitchen area. You can't hit the ball, uh, in that area, so it's, that's why it's a different color. And originally, we were hoping to get two courts on there, but they need extra space, about ten feet beyond the ends of the courts, to be able to go back for balls. So, we couldn't turn them and have them run north and south. We could only fit one on, and it's gonna have to run east and west. Which is not their preference, but it beats not having one at all. So, um, those would be the dimensions. Uh, I'd like to try to get a couple of benches. We may even have some benches left over, some from place that had been out in the village someplace else, so we might be able to put those on there, but those will be additional at the end. What I'd like to propose is we may have to remove the hoop that is on the west end that has a, a red X on it. We'd have to remove that anyway, so there wouldn't be a hazard to a pickleball player. And I would recommend that we move the one on the east side and put them both on the north and south side and make a short court. It's still gonna be fifty feet long. We can stripe off the free throw lanes. It just wouldn't have the center court. And then that way, they could play a short-court basketball. We might actually see more action from the kids if they were running a short court than we do the long court, because most of the time, they just hang out at one hoop and shoot. So, if we don't do that and move those hoops, which is my preference, uh, and maybe we can't get it all done in one year, but we can leave the, the hoop on the east end, that last one that's left there, and they still have room to play there. So, that would be, uh, option B, is to, to leave that one where it is. So, that's the proposal. Um, we do, we have an opportunity to have the court constructed here on the basketball court to grant money to the Foundation of CBPH and Lori Williams. I would like to ask that you approve this proposal, as you've seen in the diagram, uh, to allow us to build or, or at least paint the surface of the pickleball court on our current tarmac. You, I sent you information from Lori Williams regarding what the Foundation of CBPH would pay for. They're gonna be responsible for one hundred percent of the cost to provide us one court in that location, which includes the court preparation, three layers of surface, and the line paint, which is developed exclusively for tennis and pickleball courts. They will also put in the side posts, and they will have the sleeves down in the asphalt so that the posts can be slipped down in there to hold the net, and then those can be removed at the end of the season. And they'll have caps that cover those holes. So, the nets will be up about the same time as the tennis nets, and they can be taken down about the same time.
Would they be willing to, uh, help us with the fence around that?
Uh, no. They don't do the fencing. No. Uh, pickleball people like to have fences around their course, so they don't have to chase the ball, but we talked about it, and there's lots of grass there, and they do have a pretty wide buffer zone, so we're hoping that if the ball goes off and rolls, that it stops when it gets to the grass. Uh, but they don't provide the fencing. I do have an option through a couple of other avenues to get some equipment for free if we thought it would be feasible to have equipment here for people to check out and return it. But that's a whole nother issue that we would have to look at down the road. So, most people that play pickleball will buy their own equipment. You can get it at Dick's and, uh, bring your own. It was quite successful in Beattman Town and raised four thousand dollars for a fundraiser in one weekend. Uh, they had a big tournament, uh, about, well, in March. They had a big two-day tournament in Beattman Town. Two days or one day, maybe one day. But they had like a hundred and eight people come. People from Canada came, people from Connecticut, Massachusetts, Vermont, all over the place. And, uh, they, they do teach it in schools. People I've talked to here remembered learning pickleball, and they went to school at Morficee many years ago. I don't, they don't do it now, but...
I guess they got enough seventy-five people in the classroom.
Seventy-five?
Yeah.
That's all? I think there's more now.
Well, the guy I talked to, he said they had seventy-five at the time.
Oh, they got a lot, yeah. Their courts are busy all the time.
She brought, she brought, the, the pusher for that down there, Wayne Duquette, he, he came up here and, and made his suggestions. I met with Lori Williams, uh, Mrs. Leterno was otherwise occupied. I met with her out here, it was about forty below zero. She, the fence issue, you know, she said, "Look, you know, we're, we're gonna put the court in, we're gonna pay for the nets, we're gonna put those things in, and it's grass, and it's a wiffle ball. It's not like a tennis ball that bounces, you know? And, you know, the, a pickleball purist, as she described it, would say, "Well, we want a fence." But, you know, realistically, we're getting about thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars in free, um, you know, free preparation. The company that does this, they did the tennis courts about twenty years ago, twenty-plus years ago, and they're still fine.
Yeah.
So, and they were amazed that the, uh, how good the shape the asphalt is on that basketball court. There's not a crack in it. The only thing that, that we would have to do is power wash the out, maybe the outside two or three feet. Said the rest of it is fine. And, uh, they said three, three coats, possibly four, and Lori said that would be fine. They were willing to put four if they needed to, but they didn't think so. And again, the structure was there, and it leaves, it leaves, as you can see, over forty feet wide for a basketball court and, and fifty feet across. And, uh, that's way more play than we get now. We have a, uh, we have a lot of entries about, from, from Canada and from other communities around here saying, "Do you have a pickleball court?" So, it's gonna bring people in here. And if we have those benches on the side, you know, people can wait, you know, and they're pretty good about policing themselves, about, and someone can't stay on the court all day. They play their games, you know, and then they, they move on, and I anticipate that it would be pretty good thing, so...
There were some recommendations that they made, uh, that the village needed to assure that it would be used for pickleball, just like tennis is supposed to be. There's a sign posted there, "Tennis only." Uh, the pickleball court should be used only for pickleball, and that we do have to do some maintenance of the courts, you know, as time goes on, just to make sure that, uh, everything is safe for that, uh, usage. So, I think you have all of that criteria in this letter. So, I would like to ask that you would entertain that. She said, uh, they wouldn't probably get it, uh, put down until after the Fourth of July, so, uh, it's not gonna be happening right away, but as time goes on, it's only a couple months away.
It'll be better in terms of the activity that's going on down here.
Yeah.
So, the bottom line, you haven't mentioned it, I think you kinda did, is the cost to the village would be what?
No cost to the village.
Okay, so...
No cost.
I, I'd like to attend a motion that we approve on. What are we gonna do, the basketball hoops and, and make that an arrangement?
That would be, our village workers would have to remove those and then relocate them.
Okay. So, other than just the general maintenance afterwards, there are some things you'd be asking us ahead of time?
Asking to remove the basketball court. But again, if time didn't allow for that this year, they could just leave the one at the end that it is, and hopefully we just get to that when we could, so...
That's not a very big project.
No. I think if we're going, going to paint the pickleball court, I think we need to paint the lines on the basketball court also.
Well, and we can...
Whether at our cost or while this guy's here.
Well, we can paint those lines. We, uh, codeine has, they have paint that they use when they paint the striping for the parking lots, and it's the same Krylon paint. It's for asphalt streets, and we can measure those out and paint those ourselves. So, that can just be something that they do. He said they usually last a couple of years at least, so, uh, two cans of paint's like ten bucks.
Mrs. Clark, you'll probably do that.
Um, yeah.
Doing as, doing as precise as you are...
Painting the lines.
I'll make a motion that the, go ahead and, uh...
Okay, further discussion?
Yes. Okay, um, I think, Mayor, it would be a good idea, I'm all in favor of this, by the way, but I think if we could get a memo from Jan in her official capacity recommending to the board that we change the configuration of this, whether it was separate from, we're already approving the pickleball thing, but we're, have the recreation managers say we wanna convert the basketball court into this configuration here.
I think Yasi knows about that.
No, I mean, her say it to us. So, we have it in the record that we're acting on a recommendation that we...
Well, we're gonna, I mean, we're gonna put it in the minutes, I'll be doing that.
Yeah, well, I just think...
I, I can, I can do that.
I mean, just a simple thing, because then, you know, then nobody's gonna come back and...
Let's discuss this, okay? Not you.
So, then, somebody won't come back and say, "Well, the board got carried away," and they change all this around, and it, you know...
Well, I think, you know, I mean...
We're just, we're acting on the person that's, the recommendation, the person that represents the village and how we do the recreational activities outside.
I think that's what we're going on, is your recommendation.
I would expect that the minutes would reflect that. I think that's overkill, personally. Okay? I do.
I think we're fine.
Um, I mean, if, if the board is so inclined to add another layer, we'll do it, but I think that, that, uh, the clerk has all the information, and it will reflect that we've accepted a reconfiguration of basketball court on the recommendation of Recreation Director, that we will have the pickleball court, uh, set up on the western end, uh, to be painted, consider it's no cost to the village. The village will be responsible for moving the, uh, basketball hoop, uh, and the foundation there in recent years, um, and also take care of painting the stripe for the, for the follow lines at the basketball court. So, is that what your motion would be, Mr. Arnold?
Yes.
Trustee Arnold, excuse me.
I second it.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dan.
I just have a couple other points of information, so...
You can pass that along later, and we're all set. We got it. Okay. The next thing we have is the sewer rate resolution. We have the, uh, we have the, uh, public hearing on that. Sewer rate resolution, as I said, uh, basically changes residential users' unneeded water connection from thirty-four dollars to thirty-six dollars per month. So, I, this resolution is as already existing in the budget, so I'd like a motion to approve the sewer rates resolution, 2017 dash 23, uh, making, setting the rate at thirty-six dollars per month for residential users, as well as the attendant commercial user rates.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
We'll all call for that.
Okay? We can do that? Okay, trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Darke?
Aye.
Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Baffa?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Thank you. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is, uh, we started looking at this last week and then realized everyone didn't have their copy. Should all have a copy of sick leave bank, uh, proposed sick leave bank policy. You had a draft of that message for full-time, non-bargaining unit employees. Basically, what it said is, it kinda mirrors the bargaining units sick leave bank. If an individual has exhausted his or her sick leave, uh, the village should all agree that a pool of sick leave days may be established on an individual ad hoc basis for use on employee who has exhausted that leave. In other words, if, if you're an employee, you're sick, you've used all of your sick time, your fellow employees can donate as many days of their existing sick time as they want for you to use.
They don't have to?
No. Absolutely not.
Okay.
This is, this is an option.
This is right. A voluntary thing.
It's all, yes, sick leave bank is all, just like in, same thing in, in the union. Secondly, it's not in here now, but, uh, in discussion of, this came up at the NICOM New York Conference of Mayors Conference, a sick leave bank policy, and, uh, we need to add a caveat here that all sick leave that's donated, if, that's unused, is forfeited. So, that, if, no one gets any sick leave back. So, if you donate four dollars, or eight hours, and you donate eight hours, and I donate eight hours, so we have forty hours donated to five of us, and the employee uses thirty-two of those, the remaining hours are forfeited, because you can't figure out whose hours they use. So, once they go into the bank, they're either used by the employee, if the employee, she or he or she doesn't need them, they're forfeited, so...
Well, that's why they say that you gotta, an idea of how many days you want off or whatever, and, I mean, you can't say you want a week off and only take two.
No, no. You know, generally, this is a case where, um, well, I can't generally, but, for instance, it's usually the case of a serious illness where there's some treatment being done by, uh, a doc, you know, a doctor or some other medical specialist, and, you know, there's some recommendation as to how much time the person has to be off when they can return. And again, it's, it's totally voluntary, and it can be anonymous, it doesn't matter. Uh, it's just, if, if the leave is, is there, the employee can use it, uh, on their sick time. But, again, if there's like seven hour, or eight hours left out of fifty that were donated, that eight hours is forfeited, 'cause you can't determine who that would've come from. So, it's, it's just in the bank, so it's, it's gone.
Okay, so it goes back to the bank?
No, it's gone.
It's gone, you can blame it.
There's no, there's no, using, calling it a, a sick, a bank would indicate that it would stay there for a longer period of time. It's only, each case, each individual instance, it would be established. If someone ran out of leave. It doesn't happen very often, but it has happened in the bargaining unit, I know, and that person was, uh, able to, you know, utilize that. And in fact, in that one case, uh, there was some leave left, and it was forfeited. But people donated it because they could and they wanted to, and, you know, there was no problem with that. So, uh...
I got, I got just one question there.
Yeah, yeah.
Clarity, I'd like, uh, it says, "Such donated days will be administered via dollar-for-dollar daily conversion between donor and recipient." I mean, what, I don't understand dollar-for-dollar. I mean, if, they're gonna get paid whatever they, for that sick day. It's not really dollar-for-dollar.
Right.
Because if somebody makes more than one and they donate, they're not gonna get six hours...
If you make, if you make a hundred thousand, he makes fifty thousand, he's not gonna get twice as much pay for a day off.
Right, exactly.
No. It's...
That's why I just wanted to put it out and...
Should be, I think, hour-for-hour. Hour-for-hour. I think the, uh, this is a copy from the...
Union?
From the, uh, bargaining unit agreement. That's the way it was, was there. We're not, I, I agree that probably hour-for-hour is, is, uh, I think, more...
More appropriate.
Yeah, I think it's clearer.
Yeah.
In, in my view. Let me ask the person that handles the payments, our treasurer, what is your opinion on that, sir?
I think hour-for-hour would be easier.
Okay. All right, so we'll make that...
Is that in our union agreement? Dollar-for-dollar?
Yeah. So, this is a copy from the bargaining unit agreement.
Do you have one?
So, we would add, we would change that to hour-for-hour, and we would also add that all unused leave that is donated is forfeited. Is there a way we can get out of that, like, they acted, you know, they thought they'd need seven days off and they would take six? So, how many people donated that, seven days? If there's fifty-six hours, and, and they used, you know, uh, if they use only six of those days, forty-eight hours, the eight hours that were left would be forfeited, because it would probably come from a number of people. There's no way to determine, you can't give it back to some people, so it's gone. Once you donate it, it's gone. Used or unused. That, I mean, that's a recommendation of the attorneys from NICOM. They said, "There's no way to, to divvy up what's left. Who do you give it back to?"
If it's six people, you can't give it out now.
Well, no, I thought it was back into a, a law, they have annual, wherever these hours are coming from.
No. Because, because it's, because you donate it for an individual.
Okay, on a case-by-case basis?
Right. In other words, you, you may not wanna donate hours to me, you may wanna donate them to him. And so, if it was in there and I got to use it, and you go, "Wait a minute." Well, him to use it. And, I mean, that's extreme example, but that's what, that's how, that's the way the attorneys presented it. So, that's why, that's why it's... Someone, any more discussion on that?
I guess everybody, I think it's just, the bank is, is what's kinda throwing everybody down.
That's what's thrown them down. Yeah.
It's not really the banks donating.
Okay, uh, we can call it sick leave donation policy. Would that, would you do...
No, as long as everybody understands what it is, that's fine.
Well, yeah, I mean, and, and I think if we put in everything that's, uh...
Right.
Have we discussed the two, the two additions? The two additions we need to put in are one hour-per-hour, and second, all, all unused leave, all unused donated leave is forfeited. Okay, with both additions to this policy, uh, are, are we ready? Could, uh, we may have a motion to, uh, to approve it?
I'll make a motion that we approve the sick leave bank policy.
With the addition?
With the additions.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? Do we need a roll call on this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Thank you. Motion's carried. Moving there, along. Okay. The increase to build speed limit, we were asked, uh, we agreed at the last meeting to have, uh, the attorney look into it. In two weeks, we received no response. I took the opportunity during that two weeks to look at and consult with NICOM and others about this issue. Let me share with you what I found. Uh, the speed limit is in the village code, as you all know, and to change the village code, uh, first of all, uh, we would have to agree on what exactly we were doing, and then that verbiage would be written in form, in the form of a, a local law that would have to be published in papers, or attorney would have to do that. Then we would have to have a public hearing subsequent to that, uh, people could make comments on it. This also is subject to a permissive, uh, permissive referendum, meaning if ten percent of the registered voters, the number, ten percent of the registered voters, uh, were to bring a petition in, it would have to go, uh, to, uh, public referendum. I also did some research while at the conference and, and online, um, looking at the streets that we have. As you know, uh, thirty miles an hour is on Champlain Street, Lake Street, Pratt Street, those are all state highways as well. From sidewalk to sidewalk, they're about forty-five feet across. The streets, uh, and the divisions that don't have sidewalks, versus on Woodhaven, Edgewater, uh, Your Street, Sola Lane, um, Mountain View, it's about twenty-one feet wide. There are no shoulders, and, uh, and it's used heavily for walking and bikes and trove. The, the difference between the two, with the large shoulders and the sidewalk and no shoulders and no sidewalks, uh, really limits, uh, the safety portion in terms of walkability. There's been several, uh, studies done on this. Here's one that's from the AAA. They said that, uh, "An impact speed of twenty-five miles an hour, an estimated thirty percent of pedestrians sustained, uh, serious or greater injury, twelve percent die, while that jumps to fifty percent at thirty miles an hour." So, in a, in a five mile an hour increase, you're looking at a twenty percent increase in, in potential serious injuries. Now, New York City, a city of that size, in 2014 officially lowered its default speed limit from the standard thirty to twenty-five. And again, it made a big difference in terms of, of, uh, saving lives. It says, "The laws of physics and human anatomy translate to thirty miles an hour being far deadlier than twenty-five." It estimate that a person is about seventy-five percent more likely to be killed if they're struck by vehicles traveling at thirty miles an hour than at twenty-five miles an hour." And that's a, uh, AAA researcher, Brian Teff, that had a big part of New York City, uh, lowering all of theirs. Several cities and municipalities around the country have lowered it from thirty to twenty-five. San Antonio's another one. They talked about, uh, there were no, no fatalities occurring on roads with posted speed limits of twenty-five mile or less, and, uh, they felt that establishing and enforcing a citywide, citywide twenty-five mile an hour, uh, speed limit contributed the, the greatest to this thing. There were some concern that, on some parts that, uh, first of New York City, they had no intention of, uh, making this a speed trap, where twenty-five miles an hour was making this a speed trap where twenty-five miles an hour is gonna be, we're gonna get them now. They don't expect, they didn't expect police officers to begin saying, you know, you're giving tickets, you're going twenty-six miles an hour, you're getting a ticket. They simply wanted to make the streets more walkable and the streets safer. And, you know, they, there are not a lot of communities in that large a city that do not have, you know, the sidewalks and shoulders, which we lack in a number of our, number of our developments. I've discussed this with several people, uh, in the village. They have had, um, a negative response, it's that they don't, they would not like to see the, the speed limit raised. I spoke to an engineering firm who specializes in traffic engineering design, it's GPI. They're in Albany, New York. I spoke to one of their professional engineers, his name was Peter Faith. I said, what would you, how would you suggest we go about raising the speed limit from twenty-five to thirty? He looked at me like I had three heads and he said, did you say raising the speed limit? I said, yeah. He says, uh, well, you should do a traffic study first of all, and of course, you know, that would entail an expenditure of seven, ten thousand dollars, but he said basically, uh, that, you know, you would have to do that to show that there was no, uh, safety issues because even though we've had few if any pedestrian deaths, um, if someone were to get killed on the street that was previously, you know, limited to twenty-five and went up to thirty, we would have some liability if we just did it on, on our decision to think it would be a better thing. So overall, uh, the way to do it is the same way you change anything in our code. Is to enact a new local law and follow through all the procedures and, and go with it. But the, the research and statistics to where they are now say, uh, it's not a good idea. So that's what we got. I don't know, what, where would you guys like to go with this?
Well, I make a motion that we don't raise the speed limit.
Can we have some discussion on this first?
Well, we, we have the motions and we have the discussion. Yeah. For some reason, it probably cost us quite a bit of money to change the signs, for one thing. And.
How many signs do we have?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five signs?
Yeah.
At, what are they, a hundred dollars a piece?
Probably, yeah.
I don't know what they are, but.
Fifty, seventy-five dollars a piece.
Do the study.
Yeah.
Seven, ten dollars.
Yeah.
I know the last time we changed the signs.
Well, it's, he made that motion. Do we, do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, now we're, okay, discussion, so finish.
I know the last time Bob Craig changed the speed limit down to twenty-five, it cost the village seventeen hundred dollars. So I can't see spending the money to change them back myself.
Okay, trustee Baffler?
Okay, I've decided that I'm not gonna pursue putting the speed limit back where it was. But I would like, I talked to several people myself. I talked to three police officers, two highway engineers, and a lawyer. Just for my own background. Now, say we have to have a, a traffic study, they didn't have one when they lowered the speed limit. Say we have to put up signs, um, where's the old signs? And the reason there aren't many, because when you have a uniformed speed limit throughout the whole village, you don't need a sign in every street like they have now. Uh, secondly, one of the traffic engineers I spoke with said that on a lot of these side streets that have extremely low traffic, they're not gaining anything by having a speed limit twenty-five or thirty, doesn't make any difference. Another factor, another point was, I believe, not completely sure, but I think we're the only community in Clinton County with a twenty-five mile speed limit. Village wise. Probably the only one north of Albany, but I'm not sure. Thirty's the standard speed limit for suburban type places. Now, New York City, what difference does that make? It's got no similarity to us in any way whatsoever. Now, for addressing safety concerns, I do have something to say about that, because everybody wants the things to be safe around here. One of the streets that we had the biggest problem with was speeding is Montgomery Street. Primarily from people from the plant taking a shortcut to Vermont. Now, one of the things that we did twenty years ago is we created a three-way stop intersection at the end of Rose Avenue and Montgomery Street. And that caused people to stop in the middle of this two thousand foot drag race they had there, and it was pretty successful. Someone has removed those signs illegally and they're gone. The reason I say illegally is because they're still in the statute book as stop signs on those streets. Which means if somebody goes through and gets hit with a car, the village is totally liable for not maintaining the signs up there when it's supposed to be a stop sign at that intersection. They took two stop signs down without doing it legally. They didn't change it in the law or rescind the law. Secondly, one thing that I noticed that helped slow the traffic down in that street to more reasonable speed was painting the double yellow lines down the middle. That was a really good idea and it was very effective until they let the lines fade away two years ago. You can hardly see them. But the first two years they were there, it really worked well. I used to get people passing me on that street. On the village own house and they'd go around me and pass.
Well, the village didn't paint the signs on there, the county did.
Doesn't matter who did it, we need to maintain it, whoever we get to do it, you know, whether it's the state or the county or us. And sometimes you keep up with every couple of years having them painted, because it really does work.
But you have a lot of new developments, also a problem that don't have the sidewalks and there's a lot of people that walk in the village, a lot of people.
I know that. I'm not arguing to raise the speed limit again. I don't think it was a good idea to lower it in the first place, but I'm not about to.
But it's done once, so forget it, but I do think. I think it's gonna cost us too much money at, at this point to die.
I, well.
Money that won't have.
Stuff that people said.
Well, one thing, like you say, if there's supposed to be stop signs down by Rose Avenue and Montgomery Street, we ought to put them back.
They, it, trustee Baffler is correct. In researching the code.
Right here.
He had mentioned it to me. Yeah, we all have it up in here. It's in there.
Yeah.
And they should be replaced. And, and we're gonna have to stripe the street too. You're gonna have to put a, you know, stop, stop ahead, because this is gonna be a big change in his, he said it's a thoroughfare from Main Street to the bridge. A lot of people use that. I mean, you live on the street, we've got people here that live on the street. And you all know, we've all been on it, we know what it's like, so. The striping, uh, we have some striping being planned for this summer. Do you remember the streets are on yet?
Brian told me he had a budget.
It is in the budget. Um, we discussed what streets are we gonna be on. Uh, he, uh, do you have, you don't have a list of little buddy, chance maybe you have a son? Yeah, okay. So, um, you know, we can look and see if, if there's enough to do that. I, you know.
But that's for you to know.
It is a good idea. I mean, there, there's sidewalks on both sides of that part of the lake. It's, you know, part of our walkability thing to look at the lake. So definitely we wanna, you know, control the traffic there. We don't, we don't want anybody passing anybody. People crossing the street to get to the boat ramp, to get to the gazebo, to, to get to the, that's on the other side. The sportsman's pier, uh, you know, there's a lot of things that are there, so I think.
When they speed on that street, they're not going thirty-five, they're going like forty-five or fifty. You know, that's, it's significantly different than a normal street.
Well, it, yeah, I mean, that, you know, that very well may be the case. I mean, you could find individuals speeding at high rates of speeds on any of the state, state highways and some of the, you know, straightaway, straightaway streets. It's a straight shot, they're gonna, they're gonna take it, so. We, we never had a, we really never had a motion to raise the speed limit. We had a motion to look into this, what it would be. I think it's produced a lot of good, uh, information here. One thing that I think that we have to do, and we don't need to vote on it, it's law, is, and, and I'll pass this along to, uh, Department of Public Works Supervisor, that we were gonna get these stop signs back in where they're supposed to be as indicated in the code. We're also gonna have to find some, some money somewhere to paint, you know, to paint something to indicate where the stop line is and something to warn if that stop sign's coming. So, uh, I would ask our treasurer, see if we could, if we could find anything in the next, you know, in the next couple of weeks. Maybe in, before the end of May, if there's anything in there where we can dig out some money to, uh, try to do the painting and installation of those stop signs. And, uh, if possible, striping of that street. I don't know what that's gonna cost, but we're gonna have to, we'll have to find out and see, see where that goes. But we, we need to be in control of this without law.
And have Brian look into it and see how much it would cost?
Yeah, well, he, he already, yes, ma'am.
He is working right now with Al Rosco on the painting for the lines.
Al Rosco County.
From the county on, and I do believe it was Maple and Montgomery, not a hundred percent, but.
Maple was one of them, I'm sure.
Well, and, and again, the.
It was a hundred eighty dollars a mile.
The schools on there or something.
Well, that'd be great if that's what. A hundred eighty dollars a mile for the, for the, uh, bounty of the strike.
Hundred eighty dollars a mile, that's all?
I think, well, if it's two eighty.
It might be a hundred eighty dollars.
It wasn't, to me, it wasn't, uh, it wasn't extravagant.
Well, we'll, we'll look into that.
We should have the stop sign.
We, that's why I said, that isn't up for discussion, it's in the code. Unless we change the code, we, we need to put them in, and I think that's a good, good thing you grabbed that, because you're right, there is liability involved. We say our local laws is there, if somebody gets nailed coming out of a parking lot down there, the car was supposed to, there's supposed to be a stop sign there. So, uh, we'll, we'll have the Public Works Supervisor get that installed, but we need to do the striping and the, you know, the the warning ahead of time, there's gonna be a stop, because it's gonna be a big surprise to a lot of people that have been using that for a long time to see those stop signs back. But as long as there's ample, uh, uh, warning and, and, you know, the, the streets are marked appropriately, I think we're gonna be fine. So we will, we'll go ahead and follow the code on that. Uh, the speed limit, you know, again, as you said, will remain as it exists in the code, and, uh, so there'll be no changes in that, but, uh, we do have to bring it up. Hopefully Montgomery will be one of the streets that's being striped, and, uh, we'll look for any extra funds during this budget year, see if we can get, get any more done. You satisfied with that?
Yeah.
Everybody else? Okay, great. Well, thank you for your discussions and research on this. I know we all, we endeared our heart to a lot of people.
The motion, can we roll up?
Well, uh, yeah, the motion was put forth, we not raised the speed limit yet, um, and there was a second on it, so all is in favor of not raising the speed limit?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's fair, that's taken care of, thank you. All right, uh, IEP's evaluation of Civic Center control system upgrade. I know, uh, we had some discussions that we made some budget modifications about using IEP funds to do the, uh, control system upgrade. Mr. Dave Trudeau, uh, from Honeywell, who does the review of IEP requests, came down and, uh, before May first, I think maybe May fourth, May third, and looked at what, what the costs were gonna be. And he told us, he says in his email, I think IEP could justify paying for the material costs. The village would be responsible for the installation and programming costs. A large portion of those costs are the installation and programming. IEP may be able to help pay for material costs for a control system and VFD, which is sixteen thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. The, the total, the total amount was a little over thirty thousand, and that was removed from the budget. So if we're gonna do this upgrade, which I believe you all had suggested, IEP was gonna pay for it all day long. They'll pay for half of it, so we'll have to put the, put the rest of it back in, uh, at some point when we do it.
Well, we took it out of this year's budget, I heard.
Yeah.
Well, half, half it was in this year's budget, the other half was in the proposed budget.
Right.
And we took it out of the proposed budget.
And this year's.
And this, and this year's. I'd like to speak with Brian about this before we're not gonna make a decision tonight, correct?
Brian?
Yeah. Cause he, he said this setup was similar to something else that they paid for fully, and I just wanna make sure that I understood him about that.
Yeah, they, they, this is for the Brian funds. This is a, a separate system.
Yes.
And more for, for the efficiency. It's not, it's not really, it's, you know, it's, there's another VFD being installed, but it has nothing to do with your system.
That's right.
So, I mean, it's, it's a complete, as it is now, you know, the, the suggestion that we pay for it all, IEP is not possible. So we've kinda got ahead of ourselves in cutting that out, but we are where we are.
Still gonna save that.
Yeah, um, and yeah, if we, if we find a way to, uh, well, the money's not gone in the budget, you gotta move it to the general fund. So if, if we decide we're gonna do it next year, you know, based on the savings that's there, we'll put it back in the budget modification.
Right.
I just, just wanna let you know what IEP had to say. Okay, the last thing on the agenda is the Rossus Point Police Department. Okay, our discussions during those same budget modifications, um, your proposal was to lay off the chief via, via, uh, reducing his hours in half. We discussed how that would, we would go about doing that, and you all agreed that you were in favor of, understood and were in favor of dissolving the Rossus Point Police Department. I've been looking for alternatives to that, and we could talk a little bit about those tonight. I do, I do want you to know what, what some of the things are that the Rossus Point Police Department, I got a little summary from a snapshot of it, from January first to March twentieth. During that timeframe, the Rossus Point Police Department handled fifty-six complaints ranging from domestic disputes, larceny, animal complaints, and others. Uh, each complaint was investigated by the Rossus Point PD alone and usually involved several interviews and reports. The PD assisted in their state police PCI in two burglaries in Rossus Point and assisted in the arrest. The PD monitors three sex offenders residing in Rossus Point for up-to-date information and conformance to guidelines. Two of the three were visited during that timeframe to update their information. PD maintains contact with Department of Probation and Parole and identifies residents that are in that status either in a probationary status or parole status and monitors their activities. They perform home security checks, uh, during that time period. It was currently eight, there's usually more in the winter. If you, if you're going away for a month or two and you want PD to look at your house, you felt a little foreign, and they'll stop by and do a checkoff and, you know, rattle your doors and see what's going on, uh, throughout the time period you're gone. They also respond to all EMS calls when they're on, during their shift. They respond to requests for background investigations. From January first to March twentieth, they provided the information on sixty-seven individuals. They do several hundred annually. During that time period, they completed three justice portal information audits. And that's to ensure that the monthly tasks they're supposed to do are completed and compliant. And they received, they, there were four in total audits done. They were okay on all of them. They complete monthly reports to the Department of Criminal Justice System regarding any larceny. For instance, there was an iPad stolen from a car, they need to keep following up on that, as well as DMV reports. That keeps, monthly keeps track of what tickets were disposed of and, and keeps the files straight, and they can do that. They do their weekly cover base with a data master DMT, which is a breathalyzer, which has to have a dedicated phone line. They monitor illicit drug activity at several residences, uh, working with a task force. During that two and a half month period, they issued twenty-three traffic tickets. They also investigate complaints in relation to the village code. That would be noise complaints, uh, similar things, interview and document those complaints for referral. So this is with one police officer, what we have, and we don't have seven day a week, we have five day a week coverage. And it's not twenty-four hours a day, it's eight hours a day. But during that eight hours, you can see, uh, they're fairly busy. Now, in line with your decision, uh, for dissolution of the police department, we were fortunate that the governor's budget came up with a county-wide, uh, shared services plan, asking that we all submit everyone, all the town supervisors and all the village mayors and the one city mayor in Clinton County, everybody get together for the first time on the seventeenth and make proposals about what kind of shared services we would like. As, as we get farther into this dissolution, the Rossus Point PD, uh, we need to, we need to find a dedicated uh, law enforcement resource for us that we know will be, can be contacted and will handle, uh, problems sharing the village. The county sheriff's office, as one of the county offices, is, uh, I've been, it's a preliminary discussions with them. And we're gonna present the specifics, or some of the specifics of how we can do this shared services at this meeting on the seventeenth. It would involve the way we propose it, uh, it would involve having the sheriff have full utilization of, uh, the current Rossus Point PD station. They wouldn't have, we wouldn't ask that they have people stationed here, but they would use that station as a, as a, a place to perform different checks. We'd offer that they could maintain the computers that are currently there for DC, JAS, DMV, and the data master. And, uh, again, that would be at the county's expense. They would, they would also agree that besides the normal, uh, speeding, other traffic complaints, larcenies, uh, responding to domestic computer, they would also uh, help enforce the local ordinances, which is a very big thing. It's, uh, something that most law enforcement agencies, New York State Police, has a. It's something that most law enforcement agencies, near state police, as a matter of policy, do not enforce local code, whereas the, we're hoping the sheriff's department would be able to do that. This is a work in progress, and more things are, are going to be moving along. We need to start the process of dissolving the PD, as, and it requires a, a local law to do that. Contrary to popular belief, it's not automatically put as a referendum up for public vote, but again, this is, is subject to a permissive referendum. If residents get together and bring in a petition which represents the numbers of ten percent of the registered voters in Rossus Point, we would be required to put that on the ballot for, for a decision. As, as this, as this is now, if we can work through this process according to the governor's plan for shared services, the final request for services should be approved by August fifteenth, so we should know by then if, if the plan that, that, that presented to you, just the outline of it, would be accepted by the shared services panel, and that's, like I said, every town supervisor, the other two mayors, and the city mayor. We'd all have to agree on all of our proposals to do this. If that were to happen, if we have been going in line with this, we would have the, we would have the motion first to dissolve the Rossus Point PD, board would vote on that in the roll call vote, and then we would request that our attorney draw the local law that would cause that to happen. We would then have that local law published, there, there are timeframes for all these things, I think it's, if I remember, what, seventeen days, seven, seventeen days, I think, after the local law is published, you have to have a public hearing within that timeframe, and then if, if a petition were to come in, that we would have to delay it until the election, and we would have to have a special election, whichever you guys decided. But we need to, to begin to, to move forward with that. We start, we can wait till June, after I have this meeting in, in May, let you guys know how the initial trial balloon floats for the rest of the plans.
Who goes to the meeting?
All of the mayors and all of the town supervisors and the...
Well, no trustees?
No. It's by statute, in the law, says every mayor and every town supervisor will go, and they vote on all of the plans. The plan's not gonna be moved forward if, you know, if, if you decide that you don't wanna do this and just wanna, I mean, we, that's an option to maintain police coverage in this village.
Well, what if, what if we can't afford this?
Does it cost anything?
No, 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 I'm saying the police department.
Well, see, what we have now, what, it, it's kinda hard to say that, because we have a budget that was presented to us with no increase in taxes and a fully funded police department, so, it's painfully obvious that we could afford it, we choose not to.
Oh, we're looking down the road, twelve, five days.
No, exactly, but it's not, it's not like, right now, we're out of money, it's not, that's not the case.
We're not saying that either.
No, no.
You can't say this is a fully funded police department, you got one person.
And, and that position is...
That's not a, that's not a police department in my book. That's a, that's a person, that's a police person that we have here in the village, it's not a police department.
There's no weekend work.
Right, and if we, if we take this with the sheriff, we're gonna get twenty-four, seven coverage.
I, what I'm saying is, what Benny was saying, trustee Arnold was saying, I'm sorry, was that, you know, if, if the sheriff, if, if the county all, if the shared services panel says, no, we don't, we don't wanna do that, now what do we do? Is that, what you're asking?
Yeah.
Well, like I said, as it is now, obviously, we, we would have to, well, it would happen, you could decide what to, we either maintain status quo and, 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 and actually hire another police officer full-time, if, if that would be the solution. We can't get a part-time guy here, we haven't been successful, we tried for over six months. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that would have to be worked out, there's no, I wish there was an answer for you, but, you know, what I'm, what I'm saying now is...
We need to, we need to wait till...
That's what I'm saying.
Wait till after this meeting and see what happens with the shared services.
We're gonna float this out there, and they're gonna obviously hear about it now, we're talking about it now, so they will know that that's basically what we're gonna propose. Who knows who else is gonna seek similar or, or exactly alike proposals, but, like I said, I, I've had some informal discussions with, with them, and, you know, I think it's a viable alternative, and if it does, if we're able to do that and able to abolish the PD while maintaining the public table here in Rossus Point, we're gonna save that whole, that whole portion of the budget, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, again, you know...
So, on the timeline to do this, do you need the motion to abolish the police department first to get started on the thing with the county?
No.
Or you wanna wait till after you have the meeting with the county, and then have that, because...
I would suggest to you that, in our first meeting in June, when we know what the discussion is, what they say, if they're like, you know what, that's a good possibility, come back and report that to you guys, and then the motion's made, and we proceed down that road. You know, it's, there's a lot of steps in it, so it always could be halted at any point where it moves forward, and we don't know what the public's gonna do, if the public decides to get, you know, petition up and bring that in, it may force us to a referendum. I have no idea, and I don't think any of us do.
I think there's just, there's still too many open ends.
There's a lot of balls in the air right now.
We need to, we need to hear what they have to say, if it's a positive or, or a negative, and we'll go from there.
I'll report back to you guys, subsequent to the May seventeenth meeting. I can certainly provide you with information, we're not gonna have, unless we have a special meeting, I will just send the information to you, not for any action, not for discussion, but just for your information, so you're prepared for discussion at the June, June...
June fifth?
June fifth. June fifth meeting. So, is that, is that acceptable?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, I hope I gave you all the information that, that you needed, and that's all I have for now as far as, as far as that topic goes. So, that ends the, my course, I'm gonna turn the orders to trustee Arnold.
All right. I talked to Mr. Mock about the docks.
Yep.
And I got ahold of the people, the new people over at Gaines's, and they haven't got back to me yet, but Mr. Mock said if Mr. Palfey could go down there and raise the dock up with a backhoe, but he didn't think it would reach, and let the water out of the, out of the tank and stuff like that, he thought that that would be better, and if not, he could go over there for free and take and raise it up, let it drain out, and put a piece of styrofoam underneath it for us. But he, he gave me a name of the guy to call in Burlington and stuff, and he, he gave him, I told him to have him call the village office, talk to you or Don.
Yeah, I, when I sent you that email, I'd sent the, the link for EZ docks, which is what these things are.
Right.
And if you looked at it, you can see, there's no exfiltrations underneath it, it's self-floating, and the only way that that could have, if that actually has water in it, is if, if that actually was compromised, and if it was, Mr. Ma has, I've seen it done, it takes, I mean, these are big chunks of styrofoam, they put them in those slots that are underneath the docks where, where the air normally is, and it supports it, and he said he would provide that for free.
Right.
So, the first thing we need to do is try to have those, try to have that section picked up.
Yep.
And let it out, put it back down, see how it goes, so...
He said whenever he wanted to do it, he, he could go down there and do it.
Okay, great, thank you for checking into that.
Mm-hmm, and I'd like to thank the village crew for doing an excellent job on the village cleanup, and also, I know they had a lot, a lot of brush out and stuff like that, and I think, I don't know if we should keep going back to people's houses that they can pick up four or five loads of brush after they already picked it up once or twice, and they have to go back and pick up another?
Well, that's the issue on some of the people, they, they put one pile out to be picked up, and then after the crew went through and picked it up, they put another pile out.
Oh, yeah, another truckload.
No, the truckload, yeah, yeah.
I think, you know what, we, we had discussions about this at both the last cleanups, we said, these brush pickups were not for somebody to cut a tree down and provide all that brush from that one tree out there, I mean, it covered some people's whole front lawns, I mean, like eighty feet of brush.
Yeah.
That's not trimming your tree, that's cutting the tree down, and, and we said, you know, we, we asked people not to do that. Now, the option is to leave it on their front lawn. I don't know if that's a viable thing, I think we need to, once again, at the next cleanup, and in spite of it, the, the crew did get, get it all done.
Oh, I know they did, yeah.
They did, they went, they, they got it, they got it all done, and we had everybody from every department digging in on that. I think we need to stress that again at the next, before the next cleanup, that, you know, what the purpose of this is, and what, what it's not to be used for. I don't know if there's a way to just not pick it up, I mean...
I don't really see a problem...
As long as they're in, in, within that week, I mean...
Yeah, I don't see a problem with the village picking it up regardless of why it's there, as long as it's non-commercial. In other words, you hire a tree guy, and he says, well, I'm in Rossus Point, they pick it up for free, so I'll just leave it. No, but somebody cut a tree down in their backyard, they don't have a wood chipper, you can't rent one. Village has one, once a, twice a year they come and pick it all up. I don't have a problem, that's a service to the, to the village.
The cleanup, it keeps the village clean up, I mean, keeps it looking nice.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, they did a fantastic job, I seen them go in a couple of days.
I mean, we used to have the brush pile, and that took care of all the problems, but then we can't, we can't burn anymore, so...
Well, you know, the, the commercial, my neighbor had a tree cut down by, by a commercial tree cutter, and he chipped all of his own brush.
Sure.
And put it in his thing, hold the way.
Supposed to, yeah.
My other neighbor cut the tree down itself and put all the brush out, and the village came and took it out, so, you know, I mean, again, it's a, it's a great service, and as long as it doesn't, doesn't go beyond, and they keep it, you know, within the three, three inches or smaller diameter, you know, I think we're kinda, I don't wanna say obligated, but we, it's a service we provide to the residents, so we'll have to, we'll have to have further discussing before the next one. I, I don't know what else...